He's abstaining. He's abstaining.
I'm not pausing.
Has anybody looked at a calendar for December yet?
Okay, Wally.
Okay.
We were gonna do the second, I think.
December 2nd?
Yes.
Alright. Even Grove and Planning Board meeting on November 18, 2014. Motion, open the meeting.
Some motion.
Second.
All in favor, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Show the vote unanimous, show the meeting open at 19:48. This evening, let's see, we have a few hearings tonight. We have Estes Way, which we're gonna read into, and their full engineering team and presentation team isn't here. So, we're gonna open the hearing but continue it. And we're looking at, was that December 2nd? Jim, you just said?
Yep. That's the next meeting we agreed on, 12:02.
12:02?
Well, I have dates of the party available.
Which are?
Do you want to know if you could possibly do it Thursday?
No.
Then our next two days is January 6th. Or December 23rd.
January 6th it is. Gives everybody time then on that. Taylor, can you submit the writing for the continuance?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll read that into the record. Okay. Until everybody gets here, I'm just gonna go through the other things here. We have a site land disturbance application for Craft Check subdivision.
Yes. I got that one.
You're on two mics, Jim. And Carl, for your team, your engineer's not here, but we have our review engineer there. That was from Cam's office. According to that. And we have a, an initial review from review engineer for Estes Way. Coming up. Just looking at the time. Any planning board business while we're waiting for the kickoff time?
Well.
Do we have?
Kind of the Board of Selectmen's meeting last night. And on November 22nd, this Saturday, at 10:45, they're gonna walk a portion of the former industrial area that was recently, or will be purchased by the Commonwealth's Department of Wildlife and Fisheries. And that's gonna, we're gonna meet at 5 Federal Way. If anybody's interested in going.
How many acres on that? Is that the full 276?
Ninety-five, ninety-six acres. Ninety-six acres they took away.
So, they're picking up?
Yeah.
The 236, they're picking up 96.
Join that with the Hampshire Woods and Federal City and city, maybe a little over 1,000 acres.
Of green space. That's good?
Well, that means goodbye industrial area.
Well, some of that. Okay. What other updates? Anyone else have anything?
Yeah, the next one is, there's gonna be an all-boards meeting on January 17th. Also a Saturday, that's starting at 9:00 a.m.
Okay.
So, they're starting that up again and...
Just for the record, Joe, tomorrow, Board of Selectmen, those are two issues from last night. Like to see that there's a desire to have an all-boards meeting together again? That's a very good thing, so.
Yeah, that's...
Saturday morning, in January.
Trying to think of what sports activities are gonna be going on at that time.
And the other thing, I attended that meeting just to bring up that we have not received anything back on that marijuana bylaw whatsoever at all from town council.
What's that?
So...
You might wanna stay for two seconds, yeah?
I'd ask the Board of Selectmen for permission for me to begin to talk to town council. And I guess what I got was a minimum five hours, or a maximum five hours.
Okay.
And the main question is, you know, what did they do with the bylaw I submitted?
Yeah.
And, you know, were they in favor of that? And did they redo it or whatever? You know, 'cause I really need to get that and put it together.
Right.
And, you know, if they blessed, what I think they blessed, then we have something to go to annual town meeting with. Now, the moratorium runs out, I believe, November 30th. And at that point, we're supposed to do something. And I don't know, I guess town council didn't want us to do anything until the state decided what it was really gonna do with, you know, the medical marijuana situation. But they're still issuing licenses. So, you know, at this point, you know, it's better to have something ready if we had to run to a special town meeting with and get it done. And it's the locations that originally I wanted to just put it in the industrial area because I felt that there was enough off-street parking in that area in just about most of the buildings, you know, out there that would serve better. But council came back and he wanted also in the business districts as well. So, I, we did that because, you know, we've got all those small lots along Main Street and Oak Park and Washington Street. It's...
Okay.
But, you know, it's, it was funny really because the bylaw, most of what went into our bylaw came from Dennisport. And Dennisport was one of those communities that received the first batch of licenses. So, I, you know, with everything that went into their bylaw, and I know a lot of other cities and towns are copying that one left and right, I've seen it.
Okay. I think Joe's got something there.
I think we got something good.
Just to wrap this up, so we've done anything to start your hearings. Based on the conversation that was brought up last night at the Board of Selectmen meeting, rare presentation as well. I got some clarification today that is suggested that you do have public hearings on the modifications that were suggested for the zoning changes and also for the medical marijuana facilities. Begin those public hearings in February, February. You don't have to wait for input from the attorneys, town council. It probably will come by February, but you should probably begin a series of public hearings now. Within six months of town meeting, when you have those public hearings, they count towards what would be valid for town meeting support. If you have public hearings outside of six months, you have to repeat.
Yeah, that's...
So, I suggest you have one, at least an informational session that will bring to light to the public what work was done, collaboration between the zoning board and the planning board, just initiate that conversation.
On which part? On the medical marijuana, or are we talking about?
Probably on that one, that probably, you know, at least that one.
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, because it's written already, I mean, I can, the unfortunate problem is the last thing that town council wanted was all the definitions going into the bylaw that were in the state statute. That's three more pages.
Well, it's good to have that public hearing without waiting for the...
Yeah. I mean, and that, that I can get done and we'll have that and we can talk about it. In terms of the new zoning bylaw, I mean, it's, what we have, what we've submitted and everything, we can go with that, but I think we keep hearing things that when we go back to the old bylaw, the new bylaw, what I'm finding is still written the same way. So, it's things like that that I probably really need to sit down and talk to town council about and say, here's the situation. Here's what it reads, and here's what's happening. You wanna write it a different way, tell me how, and I'll do it.
Well, then...
Looking for suggestions.
The public hearing on the medical marijuana facility is gonna be a little bit more cut and dry. You should initiate, in my opinion, it's okay to initiate a public hearing for that, maybe in January, maybe February. By then, you'll have the attorney on the other word.
Okay. I just don't want a lot of things, Joe, coming up right at the end, you know, because that's, that's a pretty huge document. I mean, you know, it's, what?
You gonna be here for a bit, Joe?
Almost.
I'm here just a second.
Okay. So, let's, Jim, let's shift gears because this, we're gonna open this and continue this and then we'll zip right back in before the next one.
Okay.
So, it's 8 o'clock, so we're gonna read the public hearing notice for Estes Way, which will be continued. I'm just gonna open up the hearing, we'll get that rolling, then we're gonna, we have an extension request, and then we'll explain why, and we'll field some questions that we have to. So, this is the public notice, this was in the Lawrence Eagle Tribune. Grove and Planning Board will hold a public hearing at 8 o'clock on Tuesday, November 18, 2014, at Town Hall to consider the preliminary subdivision plan dated October 13, 2014, located off Estes Way and known as Estes Way Lot 11. Copy will be on file at the town clerk's office. This ran on the 4th and the 11th. Any objections to the legal notice? None noted. Motion, open the hearing?
Some motion.
Second.
All in favor, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye? Show the vote unanimous, show the hearing open. We have a letter written to the Grove and Planning Board, and I'll read it into the record. "On behalf of George Hazelton, the applicant, I hereby request the preliminary subdivision for Estes Way be continued until Tuesday, January 6, 2015." Taylor Turbide at Millennium Engineering. And the reason for that is their full team is not here. Onto that. Motion to entertain the continuance?
Some motion.
Second.
All in favor, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye? Show the vote unanimous. Show the Estes Way subdivision, preliminary subdivision hearing to be continued on January 6th. Okay. Now, with everyone here, we do have some time to answer, take a few questions here that is. So, what, what just happened was you all got the legal notice, and we were gonna have the hearing for tonight. They were gonna do a presentation with their full team, and then we go through it. This is one of many. This is the preliminary process that runs its course, and then we go into the definitive process, which also runs its course. You can submit to the planning board either at these meetings, in writing, or emails, any concerns you have, that you have, any engineering concerns. We'll get them checked out for you. Just submit it to the Grove and Planning Board. Be concise, whatever you submit is public record, keep that in mind. But if you do have questions, you folks live out there, you know the land best, and we've seen over the years, people point out things that only you would know that needed to be addressed, so. So, we do have a few minutes here, so let's see if we can field a few questions from you on that, but the big bulk of this is gonna be on January 6th.
Walter, can we have him raise his hands to one that I'm involved in Estes Way, just this?
Yeah, go ahead. Taylor, you're in this. Are you the only one here tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. And so, does anybody have any quick questions without getting too much? Go ahead, Bill.
Yes, I'm Bill Cook, I live at 10 Estes Way in Groveland. I'm the one that's gonna have the road running next to my house. So, I'm really the primary abutter of the group. And I'm just wondering, does this, does this development meet the planning board rules for this town?
Well, so far, they just filed. We haven't reviewed it yet. It will, that's for sure. Yeah. It has to go by the full-blown subdivision plan. Have you got a copy of the new regs, the white copy?
I don't.
Okay. Would you like one for the group?
That would be great if we could get it.
Okay. We'll get it for you. Okay? And then you can look through it. It's pretty substantial.
I don't know if I should just save my major questions for when the time comes when you have the preliminary hearing.
Yeah, just throw your concerns out, so we'll start thinking. Taylor's right here, he can start jotting some notes down for a couple minutes.
I do, just for starters, the land, way back when, at some point in time, they made a paper street into that land, and back there, they called it Omega Road. It's on the, it's on the documents in Groveland. It has a street sign on it. And one of my primary questions is, is why is the primary road going into that development isn't starting from there instead of going in and running a road next to my house?
It has come off the public way, most likely. But I'll have Taylor, go ahead. Can you field that one?
I'd rather not get into it with the Chinese word.
I'll wait for the rest of my questions to put inside. I apologize. It wasn't our intent to do this. But I grew a little hesitant to get into it without the applicant here.
Has everyone seen the plan?
No.
No? Who has not seen the plan? Show your hands. Okay. Taylor, do you have a copy of the plan with you today?
Uh, no, I mean, it's in the town clerk's office.
Folks, there is one in record there. Did we get to the library?
For $15, anyone who's welcome to call our office and we'll make a full set of French subtitles along.
Yeah, we can get those available though for free. Do we have one in the, in the planning board office, still? Okay. Folks, we'll take a look. We should have an extra copy, and we'll see if we can get you guys a set of plans and a reg book just so you have it in the neighborhood to take a look at. Bill, you wanna take custody of it?
I had asked for a copy, but they didn't have anything big enough. Obviously, it's a big plan, so they didn't have anything to be able to make a copy for us just to get measurements and be able to figure out how far off that road's gonna be off of the property.
Yeah, it's all scaled, you should be able to do that.
I mean, obviously, we just have the normal concerns about different things, about blasting and all that. When they put the road in there, they had to blast the same piece of ledges there on that property where they're gonna put the road in. And I have, I have a well right next to that. So, I'll save those questions for when people are here that can answer the questions. I think that's probably the best, the best answer. And if you do have a copy of the planning rules, that would be helpful for everybody, and I'll make sure that everybody in the neighborhood gets a chance to look at it, and I'd appreciate that.
Okay. And just again, just for those that just came in last second here, jot down whatever questions you have, you may forget. And we're gonna have several hearings on this, so you didn't miss your opportunity or your friends or your neighbors. So, if you get out the door and go, "I forgot to ask that question", write it down, submit it to us, we'll get it answered for you. That's a very good reminder about what happened with that road out there, the blasting. When they do blast, they have to do some survey work anyway, and they do check for cracks and everything. But with wells, that's interesting, 'cause sometimes it doesn't show up for a bit. So, that's a very good question, Bill. Let's make sure that we get the, get that checked out going through. And other questions like that, buffer zones usually pops up, and where the houses are going, how big, how much, what's gonna happen, the traffic increase, all that. And if we were to guess, we're probably gonna have about, geez, I don't know, probably at least half a dozen to a dozen hearings overall. So, there's plenty of opportunity to get your word out on this. And then there's a whole nother set that's gonna happen on the definitive. So, as this gets refined and goes through the preliminary approval process and gets tweaked, then we have a whole nother group going through on the definitive, which is more detailed. And so, we get to do it again, so. Hopefully, by the end, usually by the end of the last definitive hearing, there's one or two of you here, 'cause all the concerns have been addressed on there. We make sure of that. So, any planning board questions? Procedures? Rules?
I have a question, I don't know if it's for planning board, but the property behind the cooks in the lot next to them, years ago, we were gonna buy there, but they told us that the land behind them was conservation land. Obviously, that's not conservation land, right?
No, we had that very discussion a couple weeks ago here because it was, it was made that the, to the town an impression that that was going to be deeded over for conservation land, which is why some waivers were issued on the original subdivision, too. There was a whole big parcel in there that was gonna get over into green space, and then there was the whole problem with cleaning up the lot, everybody remembers, getting the trailer lot out of there and all that, so that took a while. So, yeah, there was, there was a few things, and we went pretty heavy with that a couple weeks ago. So, we'll address that at some point during the hearing process. But from what they're telling us, there was nothing official on that. It was all smoke and mirrors, so to speak.
And for the record, you keep referring to Estes Way. We know it is Estee Way. Officially, is there a difference?
This one, how'd you advertise this one?
It's taken off approved, it's a better subdivision plan.
Okay. Yeah, this is Estes.
So, we know it is Estee, without an S.
Okay.
And I think on our deeds or something, it's Estes.
Okay.
Legally, I don't know if it makes a difference.
Bob, do you remember?
Legally, it's Estes Way on record.
Is it?
On the certifies, it's without an S, so.
Without an S, so we get both. Okay. I'm not sure if this...
Walter.
We'll get Lisa to check that one.
And you can, we can tell them that there's the...
The town has, the planning board has a review engineer also.
It's interesting, the sign on the street is Estee Way.
Yeah, that's what he was just saying. Okay. What's your...
You should definitely do something about that.
Do something with the sign.
Because it actually shows up on GPS as Estes, and nobody can find our house on the road. I'd wanna make sure that's clear.
So, it looks like we'll be changing a street sign as part of the, as part of the approval process. And a good point, the, we have a third-party engineer that's gonna be reviewing this. On this particular one, it's GCA out of, out of Hingham. So, the plan gets submitted to the board, gets to a third-party engineer, the applicant pays for it through the town, and they take and compare the plan to the regulation. And we go right through it. Here's the first, first list right here on just the preliminary. And then each time there's a revision to the plan, there's another review. So, there'll be several of these. And this is all public document, public record. You can all take a look at it. Any other real quick questions that we may be able to answer for you tonight?
So, excuse me, will we get mail to notice every time you have a meeting?
No. No, it's gonna be continued, you'll see it here. Good point. Usually, someone is here that lives in the neighborhood, spread the word, or you can call us at any time. We'll let you know when it is. It is posted, and we do have the agendas that'll go up as to what it is. This one, again, is gonna be January 6th. Okay? 2015. 8 o'clock.
Now, will he definitely be here?
Yeah, actually, it's, the applicant wasn't the one that, George isn't the one that had the problem, right? It was part of his team? Yeah.
The only problem is that sometimes, yes, they do call us and say, "We're not gonna make it." So, I would, I would at least send a couple of people down here. You know, I'd get all your telephone numbers, you know, and get a string of those and, you know, start talking to one another. And just so you, you know you're gonna send two people down here, and that way, if you wanna call them all and say, "Okay, come on down, they're here", that's, that's probably the easiest way to do it. Things just, you know, for no reason of ours, it's more the builders, sometimes lawyers, sometimes engineers. It just doesn't happen. We do get notice.
I will be here. The reason I push it off to the 6th is that's the next available meeting for the attorney.
That's plenty of time, folks, to get acclimated with the plan, take a look at it. Bill, did you wanna be POC? Is that too much? You got enough going on, or? You wanna take a point of contact for the group or for your street? 'Cause you've got all my contacts.
My wife said I'd email everybody anyways today to get...
Yeah.
But we'll make sure.
Yeah, 'cause you got, you have all my contacts, you can get me anytime. And folks, we work for you, okay? Citizens of Groveland, so we don't work for developers or anything like that. We're elected officials working for the citizens of Groveland, so call us. Let us know what your concerns are. We've gotten a few calls on some other stuff already. You can go through, Bill, you can go, just call us directly. Be happy to listen to anything you got. And please put it in writing, it's a lot easier when we submit it to an engineer. He knows exactly what you're talking about when you get these reviews. And, "By the way, is my well gonna be a problem?", you know, that sort of thing. Put it all in writing, and we'll get it all checked out for you. Okay. Any other questions for Estes Way subdivision? Okay. Billy, can we pause, and I'll see if we can get that stuff for him? Go on the pause meeting here. And... Okay. Hold, let me see what I've got in the office for you for the reg book and everything.
You also will be there, right?
Yes. Thank you, Taylor. Thank you.
Advertising.
Hey, you all work for Estes Way?
Yeah.
Do you have a tear sheet?
Well, a lot of them are.
Well, Cook is the one.
What are you doing with him, are you just going to continue, or are you going to?
Right. He's like a policeman.
Yeah, oh, no, I know him, but keep it in, I know, because he's on the finance board.
Here's, here's the other thing, and it's.
Okay, so, you okay with that?
Written the very same way, you know how Dol said, you know, in the industrial zone, only one building per lot. Okay, here's what it reads, and this is the same wording as in the existing.
It's too bad he didn't give you the paperwork.
Not more than one building designed or available for use for dwelling purposes. Okay? Shall be erected or replaced or converted, okay? And that's the whole thing, because I kept saying to myself, that freaking wall is original to the fifty-four bylaw. Well, go back to fifty-four, the whole freaking town was residential. It was very little business. So I think what we have to do, if we have to then, just do we have to say something?
What dates did we give you?
About business and about industrial.
Stormwater management permit?
No, that, that's all I can say, you know, because.
I happen to have it right here. Okay, um, point of order? We have the advertising for stormwater management for Crab Check, and the review is complete. But the only thing that's missing is his engineer. But we can open the hearing, we've already got the report, the engineers are good with it, and we can close it and approve it?
I'm not sure, can we close it and approve it?
Yeah, it's nobody, our engineers already looked at it, already issued the report.
As long as we addressed what was written up.
Yeah, we'll just approve it per, per the engineering review dated November eighteen.
So who do you want to do next, you want to do Crab?
Crab Check, get him in out, yeah. So anyone here, okay. Let me see, read the legal notice then for, you were supposed to be first, I guess, here, now that I think of it. This is, he's got you done at seven thirty. So let's go, let's read the public notice, we're live? Okay, Groveland Planning Board will hold a public hearing at seven thirty, a little bit off on this. Tuesday, November eighteenth, Town Hall, to consider stormwater management and land disturbance permit dated October fourteen, twenty fourteen, has been submitted to review to the Planning Board for Crab Check Drive located off Seven Star Road in Groveland, Massachusetts. The proposed consists of two additional residential lots and approximately six hundred and ten feet of roadway and supporting infrastructure. A copy of the plan and application and supporting documentation will be on file in Town Clerk's Office. Eagle Tribune date advertising on November fourth and November eleventh. Any objections to the legal notice? None noted, motion, open the hearing.
For clarification, I had told him quarter of, because on all meetings I post, seven thirty to quarter of eight is opening mail and sign offs. He, he put it in the paper at seven thirty.
That's all right, we're past the time, we're good. Motion, open the hearing.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, show the vote unanimous, show the hearing open for Crab Check on stormwater management. We have before us here an engineering review, the stormwater management application was submitted for third-party engineering review through Camden Engineering. We have back from the engineer, third-party engineer dated November eighteen, twenty fourteen, a review, and with corrections that are necessary, housekeeping items and scribner errors to be corrected for the stormwater management plan. We need a motion, if so desired, to approve the stormwater management plan and to incorporate all the corrections necessary as indicated here with the third-party engineer review dated of November eighteen, twenty fourteen.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, show the vote unanimous, show the stormwater management plan approved to include all corrections as the third-party engineer has pointed out necessary in such plan.
And we have our office to communicate with the management for generating this.
And you will submit a, a new plan with all the corrections in to the board as soon as it's available, and we'll look for the final sign off from Camden Engineering, application and plan complete. Any questions? Okay. This is our copy, Carl, do you have a copy of this? Okay.
Yeah, that's mine, I downloaded it.
Got it, okay, gentlemen? All set?
So the hearing's closed.
Motion to close the hearing?
Okay, so motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye, say aye.
Aye.
Show the hearing closed at eight twenty-two. You're welcome. Okay, other planning board business, when we get Joe back in, we'll talk about council. Gentlemen, you're in for Skip Sheen.
One, one thing, Carl, when you start construction or any listing removal or anything, contact me.
Okay.
Why don't you come up to the table?
Yeah, just one thing, while you're in here, one of the, one of the things that we had, since you're new to this, and we haven't really put in too much effort into town council lately. I've been here twenty-three years, so we've had quite a few things going on. So what we did one time, and this always seemed to come up as an issue, is that we would have a need for town council to clarify something, just like Jim's doing. And we would submit the request per procedure to.
For case.
For, for case, over to the board of selectmen. And then we used to, we even designed a form for this, and we put down what was necessary in the point of contact. Okay, and then it would, the way it was supposed to go is that the board of selectmen would say, okay, we will grant whatever, ten hours or whatever was necessary to get the job done. And then the communicate was supposed to go directly from that point, from town council to whoever the POC was, in this case, Jim. That got handled.
This gentleman that was in between.
Pretty messed up at some point where, where we had, instead of direct contact, we would have your office.
Doesn't, doesn't Cook live the second or third hours in, on the right? Oh, he's on a lift, so he must be all the way down.
Your office would field the questions, what do you need to have done, we would explain it in extreme detail, submit sometimes hundreds of documents.
That makes sense.
And then that person in your office would forward that over to council. And somehow, either the documents got lost, something got lost in translation, or the intent of the initial request just never made it there. And then what, what that caused was a series of, oh, we didn't ask for this, and what about that?
House here.
And just too many questions, so.
And there was a house here, a house way up on the hill.
From our perspective, and from what I've seen.
That land access, yeah, was here.
That needs to be streamlined. When you give the green light, council picks up the phone, and they go right to the shape here, Jim, on point of contact, they say, what's the issue? What do you need?
Go in there.
And they talk directly.
Right behind this house.
They'll say, okay, I need supporting evidence, or I need, in this case, bylaw. And it goes over, none of this backs through, back through, because all it does is waste money. Okay, that's good.
Oh, right, right, yeah.
Right.
He said five hours.
Yeah.
Because they built a little development right over here.
Okay, but, but.
So in other words, we say, all right, great, you know.
Now, they, they want to come in right here?
You mean three hours? Okay, fine, as long as we understand what it's about.
Right. Yeah, but the attorney has got to call the point of contact, not through your office to the point of contact. That middle person's got to go. That, that's right, and it, I can tell you. Right, of course. Well, sometimes what we estimate and what council estimates could be.
I don't remember the last one.
Yeah.
In fact, I was, you know, I was drilling and all this and that.
Oh, good.
But that might have been the time where I was still working, and I only went there after work and stuff, and on weekends.
Perfect, glad you guys, yeah. The, the only, the only thing is, we got to remove the middle person, because everything gets lost in translation. Yeah. We know what we're, what we're talking about, if we have to explain it twice.
Because I retired in.
And, and that's other boards, too.
Two thousand and five.
Right.
Two thousand and five.
Yeah, it'll save some money, so you're all scared of that?
I don't know what it takes. Look at the time, I'll ask the question.
Yeah.
I'm not representing the board, I'm just guessing that this is.
That's a few minutes. The, the, the next one is, okay, town council gets what I asked them, okay, writes it down. My next question is, how long is it going to take you to get this done? Give me an answer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Denise is the goalie. I don't know. I don't know. Work up as to how long, you know, how much time you're going to need to solve that issue.
Yeah. And I saw your question, to answer it, you can't count the day of the hearing, so that's why it goes fifty days. We've run across it before, but that's it, you can't count the day of the hearing, so you go fifteen days.
Do you have the return receipts on that?
What's that? Yeah. All right, next up here, we have, let's see, what do we got here? Skip Sheen Way. Which one? Which one did you give me, yeah?
I want to push it, ask them the week.
Yeah, give me a second, but which, which one are you doing tonight? You doing both?
Both, yeah, oh, the other one should be on there, I didn't, I didn't mark it.
Yeah, usually they do. Yeah, you want to go ahead and?
They don't, I, I actually.
Oh, really?
Yeah, let's see. Oh, okay, yeah, no, I did that.
Socializing.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to have to get them out, you know, to the hall.
Don't have to leave.
Throw them out, throw them out. Get the bouncer.
More like Wakefield.
Yeah, Wakefield, we'll do a Wakefield next. Whoops. Yeah, I know, let's mute him. Yeah, it's, it does, it's, the more I think, here's another thing I want to ask. Do we want to take more of these units and just fully industrial?
Which one are you running first, the subdivision? Running the subdivision?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to read them both, and then.
Well, I don't know how you want to do it, you want to, you want to just do one at a time, or what do you want?
Well, we got ZDA, some, no, we don't. Okay, you're here for Skip Sheen, too?
I am, yes.
Okay, do you have a report on that one yet?
At this time, we have our estimate for the upcoming services.
Okay, so you're going to present that?
Yeah.
And then you guys are going to write the checks? Is that what you're referring to? Okay, so. All right. To Denise?
Yeah, a while ago, yeah, that office over there.
How much did you submit?
I asked Woody, he said make it out for five thousand.
So, and how much, Bob, do you recall that?
Right, five thousand, we turned it into Jackie, and he has an account.
That's on the review, and then how much for the actual application? Has that been submitted?
How much for what?
The actual application, yeah, thank you. Okay, so let's open up, we got two public hearings on the same, same thing, how are you? On the same subdivision tonight, so, so we'll read them both in, because they're both going to like bleed over. And then we're going to get our third-party engineer to come up, and we'll have him brief us, so we can get the services going for the review, and then we'll field some questions. Okay, and who's presenting for stormwater management for you?
I didn't even realize, because there was no review, I had talked with, how was it?
Yeah, we spoke, we spoke in the phone.
We're not prepared to present tonight.
I didn't even bother bringing the engineer, because I didn't think there was going to be any presentation, because they hadn't reviewed.
So we'll just answer questions, we'll answer all the questions from the audience. So. Okay. We'll just, we'll just watch from the table. Okay, which one do we have here? Oh, you got a pretty good legal notice here.
This is good, everything's fine.
So, let, let's open this one up, Town of Groveland Planning Board Notice of Hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Master Law Forty-eight, section three point five point two of the Town of Groveland zoning bylaws, the Groveland Planning Board will hold a public meeting at eight PM Tuesday, November eighteen, twenty fourteen, relative to the application of Wallace Capital LLC for the approval of a three-lot subdivision set forth in definitive subdivision plan, Assessors Map Forty-one, Lot one oh four, Skip Sheen Way, Groveland, Massachusetts. The hearing will take place in Town Hall Meeting Room, one eighty-three Main Street, Groveland, Massachusetts, zero one eight three four. A copy of the plan and application is on file and may be reviewed by the public in the Planning Board Office and in the office of the Town Clerk at one eighty-three Main Street, Groveland, Mass. This advertising ran on November first and November eighth. Any objections to this advertising? None noted. We'll roll right into the second one, because they're going to go back to back here. Town of Groveland Planning Board Notice, Notice of Hearing. In accordance with the provisions, Article fourteen, of the Town of Groveland zoning bylaws, the Groveland Planning Board will hold a public hearing at eight thirty PM on Tuesday, November eighteen, twenty fourteen, relative to the application of Wallace Capital LLC for stormwater management and land disturbance permit, relative to its application for approval of a three-lot subdivision as set forth in the definitive subdivision plan, Assessors Map Forty-one, Lot one oh four, Skip Sheen Way, Groveland, Massachusetts. The hearing will take place in Town Hall Meeting Room, one eighty-three Main Street, Groveland, Massachusetts, zero one eight three four. A copy of the plan and application is on file and may be reviewed by the public in the Planning Board Office and in the office of the Town Clerk at one eighty-three Main Street, Groveland, Massachusetts. This advertising also ran on November first and November eighth. Any objections to the legal notice? None noted, motions to open up both hearings.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, show the vote unanimous, Bob's over there. Okay, on that, okay, so we'll have the applicant present what he's going to speak in, we'll have a third-party engineer present his documents.
And then we'll. There are four of you here tonight. If we begin the presentation, and that means just the four of you will be able to ultimately vote.
Actually, it's, it's, or if you feel comfortable with the fifth person, you can go ahead and, and allow that person to vote if they, she was here for the previous one as well, so.
Previous, oh, you mean the last time?
Yeah, so we're familiar with the plan.
Just a kind of a.
It's kind of your call.
Yeah, I understand, even though it was kind of an information session.
It's not a special, it's not a special permit, I mean, it's, it's a subdivision.
Right.
So, you know.
Okay.
Okay, that's that, okay, you want to take it from there? Give a brief overview, and then.
Brief overview, this was originally going to be a four-lot subdivision. I changed over from the previous people that had designed this out, I guess it was heavily looked at by the time, and it was close to being permitted. I worked with Wallace Capital, and we guys are changing it over to a three-lot subdivision, which made more sense with the particular property. It basically gave larger lots and allowed me to adjust the drainage, about the drainage that was in the back of the property, up in the middle of the property, which I thought would help everyone, and it just makes sense with the particular, you know, what I'm dealing with for the grains and the soils and conditions out there. Again, it's basically a three-lot subdivision, pretty simple. I'm keeping a buffer on the edges of the property. It allows less trees to be cut down, especially by moving the drainage system, that's the biggest impact. And it also becomes a shorter road from what they originally had designed out at the previous people. The houses will consist of approximately roughly twenty-two hundred to twenty-four hundred square foot homes. Price ranges will be, I'm assuming, four fifty to five hundred range on the houses. It'll be traditional in style, I'll probably have three different flavors, each one, so they don't look quickly cuter. And I will be doing the work out there myself, I will be building the road and building the homes. And that's pretty much it.
Okay, our third-party engineer has, has got some documents to submit to us to get the review?
I do, Alan Roscoe from Camden Engineering. This is our engineering budget estimate for this project. Please, I was meant to discuss with you the previous session.
How many did you give, three?
I, I brought three.
How many you want official back?
Pardon?
You want three back?
Um, I, you know, if you don't need one of the copies.
Yeah. We're going to need one official one anyway. Just a copy of it. Okay. Need a motion to endorse?
Motion to accept the bid.
Motion to accept the bid, right?
Yeah.
So motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to endorse?
So motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I borrow your marker there, we'll get this going, get him on the record, got it? Get you going, then we can answer questions.
Yeah, just need enough copies.
That's all right. And for the folks at home, what this is, is this is the, uh, contract for the, uh, third-party engineer that works for the town to review this, but the applicant actually pays for this. This does not come out of tax dollars at all. Is this rolling? There you go. What's that? Take that. And that, okay, and then we'll open it up to the public here, and we'll see what kind of questions we can get for answers. Who wants to take the first crack? Everybody?
Lisa Brothers, um, Pauline Avery-
Mm-hmm.
Just a couple of questions if the review engineer will get when he was performing the review. Haven't studied the plans in depth. Drainage system, if you could just make sure the maintenance is looking out valleys, I don't want it going to clean the filtration system. Um, it's got a stone section before, but it's getting down. Area ways into the system itself, also make sure it's, it's sized right and, um, if you could check if it does fail or it's going to fall, make sure that it doesn't come as controlled up. Yeah, that's, that's, all of it's going under, the soil's a break, it's to be rather thick, so it'll probably be easier to bomb, um, and then with the pipe, so just make sure it doesn't go into its own property. And then during, in the calculations from the design engineer, the O and M says that the homeowners actually own the maintenance of the system. So I think they need a O and M maintenance that, my understanding is the town's considering it part of the public way. And I think they had H-ten loaded for the system, I think it should probably be H-twenty because it's actually part of the-
Those are H-twenty.
I think the plan said, I think it said H-ten in the plans. So, yeah, I just want to make sure I can do H-twenty loaded because it's under the carter sack, so, um, it's a part of this. So, so they have this lumped up there, you do have a help with here. And obviously, it's, I think it's designed for a hundred-year storm, but then just to make sure I can, can get in there because there's going to be a couple of catch reasons that can do with the system, so. So, just been my concern, my, my name is right here? So the biggest concern is if it fails, you know, obviously it's going to go this way, but if it doesn't, it's going to go this way, so. How often is it going to get, going to get cleaned?
And the town, if they take it over.
Yeah, the town takes it over, so the O and M plan and the, the couch just don't, this case, he says, uh, that these three homeowners are going to own it.
Do you have any of that in writing, Lisa? You can just hand it to him? Do you have any of that written down?
No.
I just-
You just got it, okay.
We speak engineer.
I think most of this board does, so you're in good shape.
But I thought I saw, like I said, I looked at this really quickly, I thought I saw it was H-ten and not H-twenty. I just, obviously just make sure.
Maybe I've used those before.
Yeah, H-ten. Right. Yeah, so, yeah, my main thing is this, you know, but how they really going to access depending on what the system is, but access it all. I mean, it's really, it's very straightforward, very straightforward.
Okay. And anything else?
No, I'm sure, I haven't analyzed your losing of words.
Did we give you a copy, Lisa? They put the, the subdivision regs online now?
No, I didn't.
No, yeah. Oh, yeah, yes, stormwater management, the subregs?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have, uh, comments, questions? You want one? Okay. Applicant?
Approved.
Yeah, no. Nice try, but we've got it.
So I get a second.
At the last-
You might get a table, so be careful.
At the last hearing, there was some residents concerned with moving a road over. Did, did you address that?
Oh, we talked to John, John's going to look at that for us.
Who's John?
John is our engineer.
John's our engineer.
The project, sorry.
We'd ask if they could ship this a little bit so that we can cut down this buffer.
Yeah, we did discuss that, yeah.
Yeah, I said I'd look at that.
And it just goes down, you know, that much more buffer over here. Yeah, because actually, because, because the right away, the carter sack is actually paved down here, the pavement limits it down here. A lot of the neighbors thought that this was a carter sack. Yeah, they were all concerned that this was a carter sack and that the street was going to be there, but obviously their houses are-
Okay, Bob, you had something?
One more, the size of the pipe out of the, uh, hundred-year storm, what size was that? Was that twelve-inch?
Well, I'm, I'm assuming it's a controlled outlet, I mean, I haven't, I get, I returned the drainage couch, so I don't have those with me.
No.
But I'm assuming-
It overflowed. Yeah, I'd rather see at least an eighteen.
Eighteen, uh, uh, it was either a twelve or an eighteen. I just did a system, they used an eighteen.
Yeah. But it depends on how they control on the outflow, it depends on if they're, you know, if they use enough inlet control or out control, it depends on, you know, whether you want more water in the back of that property, so. Yeah.
Probably modified with a pin, so. Whether it's a twelve-inch or a twenty-four, it doesn't matter.
Right, so the idea is that to keep the, keep rates the same and to control it within the system so they let it off at a certain rate?
Right, that's why we went with the thirty-three's, to have more capacity-
Correct.
To let it circulate into the ground.
Exactly, so, yeah, so, but they'll check that to make sure they're holding the volume, I assume it's the volume of the hundred-year storm?
Got to be.
Yeah, so.
These are pretty big structures, and these are not twelve, they're thirty-three's.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I don't doubt it has a capacity, my concern is the long-term- Yeah, the long-term functioning of it, this thing is going to be there for, you know, thirty, forty, fifty years.
Any other board questions? Audience questions? Anything else? Applicant?
Yeah, can I get a copy of that, uh, the-
Yeah, you should have a spare. Or, you know, why don't you, um-
Yeah, I did email it.
Just get the endorsed copy.
Can I just look at it reflected?
Yeah. Yeah.
You can add mine.
Yeah, send an endorsed one, if you want it that way.
Oh, I'm, I'm endorsed, I don't-
Um, do you want to continue this up to the same? How much time do you think you're going to need to review this?
Well, um-
Since we're just starting.
After speaking with Mr. Cammit, I don't think we have all the, um, application materials in front of us.
Okay.
We have the plans, we have the drainage calculations, but I'm surprised to hear the legal ad for the land disturbance application.
That's coming in, I had a-
We don't have those materials yet, which is why we held off on the review.
So, um, why don't we look at, is January sixth good for you? Do you think that's a good jump in time, gives us a whole month?
How many meetings, uh-
Well, we can jump on it as soon as we get the material-
They'll have that this week.
What kind of held hostage at this point, so.
Right, and that, and that process continues, you know, outside of the hearing, but from the hearing perspective, so where you'll have everything reviewed in your next report, uh, given with the holidays coming up, um, we've already set one up for January sixth. Is that enough time?
Well, it's more than a, I would think it's, if you get your land disturbance, let's say by the beginning of next week?
Yeah.
When would the, when's the next meeting?
December, then January sixth?
And then January, well, we're not going to make December, I don't think you'd make, would you make December?
Two weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's, why don't we, um, why don't we fly it to, uh, January sixth? That'll give everybody enough time, for residents to- Digest the plan, come up with more questions.
Hey, can I ask, isn't that, is it possible to go before that next group for January sixth? That's going to be a hostile one.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we want to go before that.
Yeah, but we-
Did you forget last week?
Yeah.
Anyway, um, they're up for eight.
We were supposed to be first.
Yeah, but we, we already told them eight, right? We just gave them eight.
Yeah, you did tell them eight.
Yeah, so you guys got to come up at eight-thirty.
He told us eight, like, you know, last time we were here.
Seven fifty-five.
Yeah, we already just continued that through this hearing for a point of record. You guys want to get in at seven forty-five? We can do that.
Seven forty-five?
Yeah, seven forty-five, good.
I'm okay with that, okay? Okay, motion to continue hearing at seven forty-five, January sixth?
So motion.
Question? Would it be possible to get a copy of the-
Let's finish the motion.
Review?
Yeah, so it's a motion question?
Oh, sorry, no.
Okay, hold on. Do we have a second on the motion?
Yes.
All in favor? Aye, and aye, aye. Okay, so the, uh, the vote carries, and the hearing continues, January sixth at forty-five. Okay, you're clear for questions, go.
Yeah, sorry, didn't mean to shut them up. So would you possibly get a copy of the review engineer's letter, so-
Yeah, they're all, all public document.
We're all good for, we don't have to travel again.
Right, so, wh-what should you do, Lisa, is you two can exchange email, but, uh, if you want to, you have mine.
I have yours.
Okay, so hit me, when we get the reports, we can, you know, it should always come through and then out.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
And then we'll get it too.
Okay, that would be great, because then, I think it'll be, be fine.
Yeah.
But, you know, we're coming from a distance, so we don't have to come, and if we know he's doing his job, then we're good to go, which I'm sure we will.
That sounds good.
Okay, that'll be great, thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Any other board members? Oh, one thing I forgot. Uh, Wickelane saw the email traffic, saw the trees, um, we haven't, how did that go after you sent them the reg? Because that, get it? He can't leave those, he has it on the land.
It's not heavy lifting.
No, he doesn't own the land.
Right.
In the spring, I'm going to send them another one, tell them before it's been moved by springtime, because he's told someone that he'll move them by springtime. I think he's called Bob.
Yeah, okay, as long, as long as he knows, it's, it's, you can push him back, it's just that he planted them on town land, and we can't do that. He, they would have ripped, and they're, they're small enough now, but-
Yeah, if there's anything that we-
Two years ago, he asked me about mowing the grass, he asked me, and I said, we don't send the highway up to mow the median, we've got to each resident to mow it.
Yeah.
And he said, because he mows it, he thought he owned-
Oh, yeah, yeah, you know, that's normal. You know, a lot of people think that. Well, unless they see a big, a big concrete bound in there, you know, granite bound in there, and they go, gee, I wonder what that is? That's pretty important. Okay, so motion to adjourn? Motion adjourned?
So motion.
All in favor?
Yeah, so this is like-
Put them in front of you. Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned, well. Did we get an all aye on that?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor, okay, show the meeting, uh, adjourned at, uh, eight fifty-two, thank you for watching at home, thank you all for coming, Joe. Always a pleasure, thanks for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Okay? Have a good night.
Well done.